All right, all welcome. May eighth, four P M. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is Lake County Planning Commission Work Session. I'll go through roll call for Planning Commission members. Howard Trips.
Here.
Abby Dahman has called in Joey Edwards.
Here.
Lupe Belvedia. And then Jamie Seifer also is not going to make it this evening. Roll call of county commissioners, Commissioner Munch.
Here.
Commissioner Marcela.
Here.
And Commissioner Fiedler. All right, any changes or additions to the agenda that we know of? Okay. We have minutes for two twenty seven and four twenty four, but unfortunately, both of those meetings do not have two of us present to pass, so we're gonna need to table those again to the next meeting. Uh, any updates that you know of for staff going through C C? Oh, and Anne, I guess you're on also.
Hi there. No, I don't, I don't think we really have any updates. I'm just excited for Bryce's presentation.
Awesome. Thanks. Okay, old business, we have file twenty three dash zero four, which is Bullens Land LLC Outfitter and Guide C U P. And it looks like they just withdrew that.
Yeah, so Mr. Linda says withdraw on that because he's having some trouble getting his traffic study together. So rather than serially table the file, which has been going on for a couple of months, I just convinced him to withdraw the file. It's a fairly straightforward process with the same application as soon as he has that traffic study, which C dot requested.
Got it. Okay. Any questions? Okay, we'll move down to new business, which is the Lake County Water Augmentation Plan and Enterprise Review presented by Bryce.
Thank you. So I just have to pull up the PowerPoint. Bear with me, please. All right, can everyone see that?
Zoom, can everybody see that? The power break point start?
I can see it.
Okay, thank you, Howard.
If you go to more, high floating meeting modules, down, yep.
Thank you. All right. So yeah, I just wanted to give you guys kind of, this is the primer for the Lake County Water Use. Just going over Lake County's water rights and other water uses in the county in general. And then talking more specifically about the Lake County Water Enterprise, which is, I'm working on with Sarah quite a lot these days. And we're making some progress where we might actually have this enterprise up and running. I'm not going to give a specific date, but sooner than later, after many years in the works, so really exciting stuff here. But just going over some of the basics so that everyone has the same understanding of where we're at. All right, so some background and context, in the world of water, we use different terms that aren't used much outside of it. So it's nice to just get on the, define our terms. So one acre foot, acre feet is usually how water in storage is measured. Or water is used throughout a year, longer time periods. So an acre foot is equal to roughly three hundred and twenty six thousand gallons or an Olympic sized swimming pool. You also hear reference a lot. Water as it's flowing or in motion is mostly measured in cubic feet per second or C F S. And so one C F S, a good visual is one basketball worth of water. So if the Arkansas River is running at four hundred C F S, which it is right now in Southern Lake County, that means that four hundred basketball units worth of water are passing a given point in a given second. If you add that up, twenty four hours of one cubic C F S, you get roughly two acre feet of accumulation of water, so six hundred and forty six thousand gallons. Another big unit you here mentioned in this county is one Twin Lakes water share. So Twin Lakes water shares are a little bit different because they are defined as space in Twin Lakes Reservoir, not necessarily by the actual water amount. But depending on the year, those could be anywhere from a half acre foot to almost a full acre foot of water per share. In Colorado, we have what's called the prior appropriation doctrine. It's also called the Colorado Doctrine because we were the first state in the West to do it. So basically an acknowledgement that we have very limited water resources. And so we have first in time, first in right use of that water. So if a farmer in eighteen seventy five diverted a little bit of the water to water his pasture, then he retained that water right through, in perpetuity, as long as he kept using it. If the city of Aurora came along later and bought that farmer's farm and his use of the water, the city of Aurora could take that same water because it's in priority, it's so old. And they could go through a court process to make that water available for their golf courses down in Aurora. Which they do. So we have, there's also, there's two different kinds in, in, throughout the summer, we have water that's in priority, meaning it's allowed to be flowing, right? Or it's called. And so called, in this context means if you get a call on the river, that means you can no longer use that water right. So we have, for example, an eighteen eighty six call. So when they call our water right, that means that's the day we have to shut off the head gate and no longer use that flowing water. If it's in priority up to that point, we can use that flowing water.
They use dates and like releases.
Dates and locations.
And locations. An eighteen eighty six on the Pecamore is our effects. Like then you kind of, there's that location, then you think about, okay, what upstream? And the dates and all the appropriated years, like, has to be collected to make sure it gets to that kind of location and feeds that right. That's in that, um, uh.
Body?
Not contiguous, like that, uh.
Drainage.
Yeah, in that priority, in that, in that line, in the line of priority.
Yeah, so they'll continue to call water until they can keep the most priority or, you know, the most senior water right in priority. So in a dry year like two thousand and twelve, they called all the water, all downstream water was called by, you know, June, just so they could preserve those really senior water rights. This year, the drainage is looking, we're almost at a hundred percent, but we'll see how the spring treats us. So a big user that we're all familiar with in the level of Lake County area is Parkville Water District. Right there, our municipal utility water supplier. Their current capacity as of the end of the last year, when we met with Greg Teeter, was two point seven five million gallons per day. Their current system demand on an average day is one point oh eight million gallons today. And in the summer months, you know, usually August, they can see a max of one point two million gallons per day asked of their system. Per household, that equals out to, and the numbers are quite clear, but we have an average of a hundred and thirty gallons per day per household throughout the year and a max of two hundred and fifty gallons per day in August. And they're planning on really upping their capacity this year. So if you guys aren't familiar, they're gonna up this to four point three million gallons per day. Really what that means is that fixing the existing system loss, you know, replacing lines that are leaky and replacing their equipment at their water treatment facility is going to add the equivalent of a new water treatment plant for them. So that's huge. Parkville Water District, as far as upcoming development goes, is not our worry as far as capacity goes, right? We have other utility districts that are our worry because they don't have the capacity. Parkville has this untapped, um, un, you know, undeveloped water right up Iowa Gulch, which is six C F S. So, you know, just going back to how many acre feet that is per day, that's a huge water right that they still have, that they could use or sell or develop or however they want to use it.
Really quick, uh, for everybody on Zoom, because we are watching the slide, we can't see you. So instead of the whole raise your hand, if you can just, in case anybody has questions, just feel free to speak. If there's any questions along the way, I just wanted to.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, because ask me any questions as we go along. Just the basics, we'll get into the actual nitty gritty of Lake County, just wanted to kind of lay down the basics of what other water providers we have. Parkville Water District, this map just shows you that they collect their water in four different basins or there's, that's where their interest lies. The pink area with the blue border is the Parkville Water District boundaries proper. And you can't see, but those, the light blue lines within the district and kind of extending out of it are the pipeline network. And so those two longer lines that go north of the city to near the Arkansas River, those are actually two wells that Parkville has the rights to, that they pump out a lot of water. And so a lot of our water that we see in the district is actually from that, those wells. And then Evans Gulch is where a lot more water comes. They have a storage, a couple of storage facilities up there, and that's where their water treatment facility is as well. We have other water rights used in the Lake County that don't belong to the county. You know, we have a lot of water rights in this county that belong to downstream users, right, that we never actually see used in the county. But Aurora, Colorado Springs, there's a utility district towards Colorado Springs or a little bit north of it in the Air Force Academy area called Donala that owns a ranch here and some water rights. Pueblo is a big one as well. So, so major front range cities. They were up here decades ago, like Pueblo started acquiring water in this county in the forties, you know? And then before that even, they have a Hewing ditch, which is the first ever trans mountain diversion. So taking, if you drive over that ditch as you're entering in Skicuber, that's actually the first ever ditch to divert water from the western slope to the eastern slope in Colorado. And Pueblo owns that and still utilizes that. Angel View One, oh, I didn't save this. We deleted some of this stuff because some of this stuff has changed a little bit, but Angel View One, you know, they're going through, they've actually gone through an augmentation plan for domestic use using some Twin Lakes water shares they acquired. They also have some flow rights to serve some of the pleasure ponds on their property. And there's just some details there that are pretty complicated and convoluted. But essentially, we share, the county shares the Dairy Three path with some of their water. We'll get into it a little later at the end of the presentation, but D N R, D W R, Division of Natural Resources, Division of Water Resources, Department of Natural Resources, Division of Water Resources, has reassessed this entire area because of these court cases and because of other stuff that's going on, like the Box Creek Placer Mine. And they're reassessing the entire Arkansas Basin in general. As we have less water, as there's a new climate regime, and we're just gonna have less water going forward, they're starting to crack down a lot on any ponds or anything that don't have what's called a quote, legal right to exist. But we'll go into that a little bit more. We have the Mount Albert Water Association, which serves the Panarc area. They're currently nearing their capacity of about four hundred houses. So what we've heard is they have about twenty, twenty-five water certificates left. And then they're done, they're kind of capped, they cannot provide water to any more houses. They're currently in court seeking a decree that will expand their capacity to up to fifteen hundred houses, is what we've heard. I can't tell you the details of where they've acquired their water, where that water's coming from. But development in the Panarc neighborhood is hitting a wall pretty hard right now because of this issue. And then we also have domestic wells. So in Lake County, we have a lot of parcels that exist before nineteen seventy two, which is when the state kind of drew a line in the sand and said parcels before this date have the ability to get a well. And parcels after that, created after that date, unless they go through the subdivision process, do not have the ability to get that well. We have a unique neighborhood called the E E Hill area, right, which was after nineteen seventy two, but went through a court ordered subdivision process. And so the state has so far allowed them to have domestic wells on their land.
With domestic or in-house? I thought those were in-house wells.
Yeah, domestic in-house, I should say they're both, but yeah, they are only for in-house. They cannot use those for landscaping or horses or anything like that.
Sorry. Mount Massive Trout Club and Home State.
Oh, yeah.
There's examples of, you know, long standing stuff.
Yeah, so then we also have other neighborhoods, like, you want to talk about legal right to exist? We all know about Mount Massive Trout Club and Home State Trout Club, right? They actually have water rates that were acquired decades ago to feed their ponds. And then those ponds are actually, you know, have water that's compensating for their evaporative loss and absorption into the soil and things like that. So this is the area, this is the area covered by the ninety eight C W one seventy three blanket augmentation plan, which took many years to get through. A one and A two are just two different areas within it that have slightly different regulations about how water can be augmented throughout them. But really interesting note is that every black dot is a well on, associated with a house on that. So you can see that a lot of the areas within the augmentation plan are already served by domestic or in-house wells. And then we have other neighborhoods like Beaver Lakes that really shines as well-served outside of the district. Home State up here, or that's a Finding Run, yeah, and this is Home State. So Lake County's water portfolio, what does Lake County have out of all the water in our county? Well, we currently have the equivalent of forty acre feet from Aurora for I G A with them. And this goes back to when Aurora was acquiring all of our ranches and lands and water rights in the late nineties, getting ready for what was called the Box Creek Reservoir. So that forty acre feet is kind of to get us through until the Box Creek, or was meant to get us through until the Box Creek Reservoir was built. That's, those are supplied from Aurora's Twin Lakes shares. Forty acre feet equals roughly fifty-five shares. At current market values, that's about three and a half million dollars worth of water we have access to every year. Or the shares would be worth that, and I think that's actually a low estimate based on some of the prices I've heard for Twin Lakes water shares going for now. Twin Lakes water shares now go for like sixty-five thousand dollars apiece, and it doesn't even get you a full acre foot. The agreement to supply that forty acre feet ends when Box, when and if Box Creek Reservoir is built. Aurora came in here and they kind of had some plans and it sounded like they were gonna get going. Their original date for completion was twenty fifteen. Now Aurora is saying twenty thirty-five at the earliest is when we can see this reservoir coming online.
So that's in perpetuity until Box Creek Reservoir is built?
Correct. But if you look, when Box Creek Reservoir is built, Lake County then gets the rights and the ability to fill twenty percent of that reservoir. There, some of their plans said the reservoir is gonna be twenty-five thousand acre feet big, so that's up to five thousand acre feet. That's variable because they're not through the final design, but just to kind of give you an idea of the magnitude of what we would have the ability to have when the reservoir is built versus what we currently have access to.
So how does that, um, how do you, how do you get to use water that you can't depend on down the road? Like, what's an example of that?
It was like.
Like if you, if you, if you have these fifty-five, forty acre feet right now, and then later on that's gonna change to the five thousand, what happens, like, what are you using?
We'll go into that.
Okay.
Next, next, yeah, the next stage is how we're using that, and how the forty acre feet is actually.
I'm just like, how, how do you even get to use that?
Right, well, it's through, currently it's a use by right, we can't store it, right, that forty acre feet, we have to use it as it flows. But we can use it by exchanging it up to other exchange points within the augmentation plan. So even though it's flowing out of Twin Lakes, we can exchange that up so that it still goes into the Arkansas River, but it just comes out of Turquoise Lake, for instance.
We all, we have an intergovernmental agreement with Aurora to prom, like, promise us that water. And it's mentioned, and that's what's in our decree adjudicated through the water court. That forty acre feet is cited there, so it's kind of, I mean, in reality or in theory, sure, Aurora could maybe take it all back. But through all the effort, uh, the intent is to supply the county with that forty acre feet to be released up until, that's kind of like the mitigation plan before the county. I mean, that is the mitigation plan essentially. And their wetlands planning and all the work around Hayden Meadows was, you know, something that you would see in through, and you might request through like a ten forty-one permitting process.
And maybe this is still what you're getting to, but I guess what, like, when I'm in my world, I'm thinking water equals somebody gets to use it on their property, whether for horses or house or whatever. But you can't really give away that if it's so, and let people use it for that or subdivisions, if it's gonna shrink down to that, like, then what hap, if it's gonna shrink down to five thousand.
What do you mean shrink down?
Well, because it goes away, right? The end, it ends, the fifty five, or the forty acre feet ends once Fox Creek is built, and then it turns into five thousand acre feet.
Right.
So what happens to all the water that, like, let's pretend we gave away.
Releasing, never give away.
Okay, we're releasing it to this subdivision.
We, I think we can, um.
Like, that's what I'm trying to understand, like, how do you use that water?
I don't know that, I, I can't say that I've seen it specifically spelled out in that transition of when Box Creek is built in full. But I might have a station that continue to have or have, and I, I don't think that, I mean, the intent was to give Lake County that forty acre feet to develop the enterprise. And I think that we could make, that's a great point, we'll put that in our revised.
And I just feel like it's because I'm kind of dumb about this piece of it, like, I just don't know how it all works.
Well, I'll go into like how we currently use the forty acre feet, and that might be able to explain a little bit, or you might, yeah.
So when we're releasing water out of Twin Lakes and we're not actively using it, we can trade what we're releasing and not using for something out of turquoise or something farther up the chain?
We wouldn't be releasing it from Twin Lakes, it's more just like.
I, I mean, if we're not using what's being released, if we're, if we're not using ours, we can trade that for something farther up the chain? Is that, I'm not sure how to explain it.
Yeah, we're not, we're not trading it, we're exchanging it.
Exchanging.
Yeah, the same water, yes, we can, we can exchange it further up.
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
We don't, yeah.
Still the same water.
Yeah, we, if you go back to the augmentation boundary, the exchange is meant to then like recharge the water table. The exchange isn't like, we can't use it here, so we'll trade for something else. It's just with the amount of water we have and the physical topography of this boundary, we'll do, you do a paper exchange.
Right, yeah, you're not pumping it up to turquoise.
Correct.
You're, you're, yeah.
Yep.
It's paper.
Gotcha.
Yep.
And so then we have the Dairy Ditch number three irrigation rate. That's thirty-four, thirty-eight, six acre feet a year on an average yield. But just to be safe, right, and account for dry years, we have essentially, we can count on, which is, you know, all variable, but we can count on about twenty acre feet minimum average yield during dry years even. The thing about the Dairy Ditch number three, right, is it's our, uh, one of our best rights and most used, but it will be called before the summer's end most years. So it has an eighteen eighty-six call. So we're, the golf course, for instance, is not able to use Dairy Three by exchanging it up all year because eventually that Dairy Three will not be able to flow.
Correct.
At which point, Mount Massive would then potentially start using the forty acre feet of Aurora water because that is available year round.
Right.
Then we have this really amazing undeveloped water right in the county, which is for the DeLapp Ditch. And it's a direct flow rate, most likely associated with, um, and attached to the land where the golf course is. And it was probably transferred at the same time, but we need to do a little bit of tighter work to clean that up. But the cool thing about the DeLapp Ditch, right, is that it's five C F S, direct flow rate before it's called. And we don't owe any return flows, so we don't owe any, you know, as it's getting absorbed into the land or as it's evaporating, we don't owe that back to the flow. And it's just after priority cutoff, so it usually does not get called until June on average water years. On a wet year, we could get it all the way until July, on a dry year, we might lose it around this time. But it's one that, you know, if we can develop it properly, this is water that flows, it's a lot of water. We could fill up a reservoir with this, right? This would be one where we could fill up our five thousand acre feet of space, where we could build a new reservoir and fill it up with this because we have the ability to bank this water. Then we get into the blanket augmentation plan itself. So the resolution date of the blanket augmentation plan, if you see that ninety-eight on the top of that, that means the case was filed in nineteen ninety-eight. We didn't get a resolution until the beginning of twenty seventeen, which is a ridiculously long time. And actually, Colorado state law has changed since this came to be to make sure that no one else has to ever go through this process. Yeah, this, this weight, so Lake County, you know, we're exceptional in many ways, this way too. Forty acre feet of those Twin Lakes, that Twin Lakes water is Aurora water usable by the county under the augmentation plan. That Dairy Ditch water is also be able to be exchanged under the augmentation plan. The O G plan allows, um, us to exchange it, you know, throughout the boundary area. Like Sarah was saying, it's all based on geomorphology and allowing the table to be recharged, the water table to be recharged. There's diversion points, which actually I should call them exchange points. I don't know why I didn't save my, I made some changes to this. Anyways, there's several exchange points, there's Birdseye Gulch, which is up Highway ninety-one, Dairy Ditch number one, two, and three, Hayden Pond, the DeLapp Ditch. Iowa Gulch is another identified one, and then we're working to, with the city of Aurora to make sure that Sugarloaf Dam is an exchange point as well, so that we can exchange our, our Twin Lakes shares up to turquoise and have them come out of Lake Fork. Mount Massive Golf Course is within the O G plan, O G plan boundaries and currently uses a Rule fourteen exchange, which is a fancy term for a paper exchange done through the Division of Water Resources to exchange up to the DeLapp Exchange Point, which is right next to their golf course. But really, they're pulling that water out of their wells that they have on the, on the golf course. So Mount Massive Golf Course, we try to have them use Dairy Three water until it's called, right, through that Rule fourteen paper exchange. Currently, Division does the paperwork for them. And we just wrote a memo that we sent off to Mount Massive Golf Course, uh, I think one or two weeks ago, informing them that the Division will no longer do that work for them, and they have to do all their own engineering, calculation, paper filing, everything like that. The Division just doesn't have time to worry about this one little small player. You know, they're doing Rule fourteen exchanges for twelve hundred wells at a time in some other parts of the basin. So Mount Massive Golf Course will have to do their own work now. And I'm in November, Mount Massive Golf Course owns a, owes a return flow replacement to, you know, counteract the, the absorption into the soil and their evaporative offset. And we don't know how, but they have access to Twin Lakes water shares somehow, that's not through the county. Either they lease them or one of their board members has them, but that's where that comes from. The Aurora forty acre feet historically has been twenty-three acre feet of that was going to Mount Massive Golf Course. And then, believe it or not, seventeen acre feet of water evaporates off of Hayden Pond every year, and that's what we owe back. So if you can imagine these, these reservoirs on the eastern plains where it sits at a hundred degrees all summer long and then it never freezes over, imagine what their evaporative loss is compared to our tiny little reservoir here that's frozen seven months a year and doesn't get really hot in the summer either. That's how much evaporative loss we, we have to account for and pay back to the, the system, I call it, right, to pay back to the river. Starting in twenty twenty-three, or twenty twenty-two and going into twenty twenty-three, Mount Massive is kind of, their new lease gives them access to thirteen acre feet, which, you know, they're supposed to use after they're done using the Dairy Three. Seventeen is still going to Hayden Pond evaporative offset. And that leaves us ten acre feet that are reserved, permanent water that we know will have access to for the Lake County Water Enterprise, barring that transition phase when Box Creek is built in twenty years. But this isn't to say that Mount Massive Golf Course is guaranteed that thirteen acre feet, right? I think the, the point is that we're starting to wean them off of having guaranteed great county water for free. They will eventually have to become, source their own water either through lease agreements. I know they, they lease some water through Pueblo now, or they'll have to become a customer of the enterprise or something like that. But the intent is not to have them keep thinking they can always have this guaranteed water from the county.
Is the golf course, why did I think the golf course was the county?
The golf course, um, the golf course land is owned by the county, but the operations.
Okay, their business leases.
Exactly, yeah, so we're doing a lot of work to separate that. It used to be like a good question, are Lake County, you know, they were very quasi, but now there's a sep, a more clear separation between golf course operations and the actual land and entitlements that are on the land. So Lake County Water Enterprise is basically just facilitating use of the O G plan. And within the O G plan's decree is how we can administer and facilitate use of those county water rights by paying consumers. So we have possible clients, right? We have, this could go towards development outside of the Parkville Water District area, housing, commercial. It can go towards evaporative loss of people's pleasure ponds, it can go towards augmenting natural, not quite natural features, but what we think of as natural features that may not have a right to exist, like the Twin Lakes. Beaver ponds, or it can go towards failed well relief, right? We're starting to hear reports of shared wells and E E Hills failing. And so you have six houses on one well. And so you have six houses on one well, and that well is the only one with the legal right to exist. The only relief for them would come from being able to be part of the enterprise and being able to augment their new well that they drill with enterprise water. There's another possible additional function that I'd like to expand the enterprise to eventually, which would be like a water brokerage or exchange, like a clearinghouse. For Lake County water rights when they come up for sale or for lease. A lot of times Pueblo actually has so much water in our county that they lease some of their water. And so maybe we could be the central point for that to, um, share that information with all the stakeholders that, you know, just be the. The arbiters of the information. And then it also gives us the ability to facilitate transactions in a way that benefit Lake County. And this would be a double pronged approach where we're also looking at our ten forty-one regulations, which are kind of, um. The state has given local jurisdictions the ability to have some say over big projects. Mainly where it would be relevant to us is like dams, right? Where they don't necessarily, there's not a zoning or process that you guys go through to approve a dam, has to go through a federal estate process. But we can put on our own ten forty-one regulations, which would give us some local say over some of those big infrastructure projects usually. So, either way, we want to find ways to facilitate these transactions and water movement in this county that benefits the citizens of Lake County.
Can I just add a comment from your comment about potentially augmenting evaporative loss on ornamental ponds? We've not, we decided not to do that right now. The division will be cracking down and enforcing, um, the illegal pond activity. They've been doing it in the, in the district and then they'll move up to Lake County pretty soon here. But, um, the, since we aren't up and running yet and, and that obviously from the evaporative loss on Hayden. Could take up a lot of water potentially, um, we pulled the board and we, we. That will not be an option.
Yes.
At the onset of the augmentation plan.
Yes, worth, worth clarifying, right? These are all the potential uses for the augmentation water. But currently, yeah, the board is under the understanding that the initial augmentation water will be available for domestic in-house use only. So the administration of this whole thing, which is kind of what we're working on right now. Um, the enterprise board will be the VOCC. Um, but there's potential to have it under the guidance, similar to how the PC informs the VOCC on land use issues. There's a existing but kind of defunct, um, council called the Watershed Advisory Council that could act in the same way. Where they are just a referral or advising committee and council to the VOCC, to be determined. We've had prior discussions that throughout the years of like how we administer this, you know, do we farm it out to Parkville because they already do water? Well, this is a much different administration process than a public water utility. There's Upper Ark Water Conservation District, Water Conservancy District out of Salida. Um, they currently do much the same thing as their enterprise, but for JP County, so they have, they've been advising us a little bit on what to expect. Um, what's involved in administration, and there were some discussions about maybe contracting with them to handle that administration. But some of our current discussions, uh, that second point, that engagement with Water Resource Engineer. We've actually engaged with the Water Resource Engineers that helped us with our decree in the first place. And they've kind of offered that there's potential for some augmentation administration training that I would go under. So that we could keep the cost savings in house, but also just the knowledge and capability in the county when we start administering this kind of, this plan.
You just can't leave for twenty years, just saying.
Or at least until I have a very well set up. But, yeah, it's, you know. Um, identifying potential for Hayden Pond, which is our current reservoir we have built, right? We just didn't know how we could use it for storage without killing the fish. We've done a little bit more work now and we've, uh, we've seen some tables that makes Sarah and I pretty confident that we have the ability to use it for storage. While also preserving its recreational amenity, you know, like in not killing the fish, we can probably take off, it looks like twenty acre feet. Is what we can store in Hayden and actually use.
How many acres is, I mean, in size, how many acres is it?
It's about forty-five.
Is it that big?
Yeah, and believe it or not, you don't have, if you drop it the first three feet, you get twenty acre feet off of that.
Okay.
So we could still keep that ten, ten foot depth is what we were told with the vision.
Right, right.
Um, but yeah, you know, based on talks, especially with Upper Ark. Um, the minimum purchased unit is one twentieth of an acre feet, uh, acre foot. That would be enough to serve the average house for a year inside use only. So that ten acre feet we've reserved from the Aurora water, that gives us theoretically two hundred available units to start working with right now. Without, you know, creating any new storage or gathering any new water rights or going through any new court decrees. We could have two hundred available units for our, um, water enterprise when we get it up and running. So that's the thing, we're, we're trying to get this up and running with the available resources we have, which is just the pond, the current engineer. And maybe me doing some administration stuff, and then those two hundred units. We really don't know where this is needed yet, right? Without, we kind of have to open it up to a lot of either community feedback or just market demand to see where the demand. And where are the issues and where the, the water is needed. Um, and then, you know, it's kind of just kind of be one of those things where we have to go at, we're, we're gonna figure it out as we go, because this is all new to us. And then, once we have it up and running and once we kind of understand a little more about potential issues.
I think you might have a question on.
Yes.
Oh, hi Bryce, um, I was just thinking about the Aurora, Aurora IGA and the water we have from there. I mean, there aren't any restrictions in the IGA of what we can do with those forty acre feet.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, this.
It's municipal, it's like, it's fully consumptive, um, decree for municipal use, which is the highest.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, once we get it up and running, once we identify kind of the demand and start kind of hammering down where we want and what we want this to serve. Then we can start the planning process of the increase in capacity. Biggest things we need to do. The bottom point, Dilap Ditch analysis, that's the huge part we have to get done to increase our capacity. So Sarah and I are going down to the Arkansas River Roundtable on Wednesday to try to put, start putting in some face time. Because we're pursuing a grand opportunity from Colorado Once-Red Water Conservation Board and the Arkansas River Roundtable. To bigger organizations that have a lot more access to funding to look at the Dilap Ditch. So we need to do a little bit of title cleanup and just make that more clear. And then we need to assess the current state of the ditch, and let me show you what it looks like in just a minute. We need to start planning for what work and repairs it would need to make the ditch even functional. Do we need to line the ditch? Do we need to make a pipeline that follows the old ditch pathway? Um, and then after that, we need to determine the feasibility of using that ditch water in a water storage facility. Either a new facility that we could build at the golf course, it's county-owned land and there's quite a bit of area out there. Or how we could use that water to fill up other storage potential, or storage areas that have potential, right? Like, we've heard that Clear Creek Reservoir is actually currently expanding. There's potential to get on their list to have storage down there. But Twin Lakes and Turquoise Lake, even though they're in our county, we can't store our water there. There's no ability and capacity to store our water rights in those big reservoirs. So we have to be creative. Um, there's those beaver ponds up where the Dairy Three diversion is on the base of Mount Albert. Those are actually based on some work and some impoundments that were done in the fifties. To take naturally occurring beaver ponds and make them into beaver reservoirs. And so the division wants those to go away, but there's a potential to be really creative and to use those for storage, right? If we went through the right engineering and the right decree process, and it's right next to our diversion point, so it could work out really well. But these are the kind of things we have to start thinking of in the future, once we get everything going. We have to re-permit the Mount Massive Golf Course domestic, it's currently a domestic well, we have to re-permit it in the county's name, because the county actually owns it. And we have to make sure it's a commercial exempt well. It's pretty old, um, so it's actually for an entire acre feet, which is pretty crazy to have a well. With an acre foot of right.
They're gonna let you because they did it wrong?
Yes, the division's the one that brought this up to our attention and they're like, just please.
I mean, I've had people before be like, I'm gonna switch my domestic to commercial, and they're like, no, that's not how that works.
That, not how that works. This one, they, they believe it was an error, that it's even classified as domestic. Um, but yeah, it shouldn't be in the golf course's name or the golf club, I think it was before, yeah. It's gonna go back to the county very clearly. And then we need to talk to Aurora to allow Turquoise Lake and Hayden Pond, uh, to be delivery points for their forty acre feet. And just clear that up with them, um. And then Division of Water Resources are talking to us about the possibility to open up Iowa Gulch as a delivery point, mainly for future capacity. And if the, if Parkville ever exercises their ring, develops that, right? We could have the ability to use it as well, or, you know, as a delivery point, the infrastructure, not necessarily the water. So just to give you an idea, this is the Dilap Ditch. So you can see it's the teal line in the middle there, kind of makes some big jogs to the west as it comes down from the river. But yeah, it starts here, goes behind Seppi's house, behind the campground, and then crosses the road. And then goes near the postage stamp camping area, around the border of the golf course, before it finally ends. Technically down there at, uh, what is that, three hundred? So you can see, like, there's, this corner is kind of what Sarah and I have identified, is like, this has the ability to be a reservoir or something. That could be directly fed from the Dilap. Cause it's county-owned, so it's a huge burden, already gotten over. This is what the Dilap Ditch looks right now, looks like right now. So this is the head gate, this is the Arkansas River, this is where it enters, and you can see it instantly becomes. Just a mess of willows and grass. This is actually one of the more defined pictures. You can see where the ditch might be going. But that's, yeah. And we've heard that when they ran it before, which has been several years, but it just floods everything, there's breaches everywhere. Um, so Chris Ortola from Public Works has walked this and he's kind of done some initial assessment on like what it would take just to clean it up. And then from there, we might actually, once we see the ground and pull out some of the willows, an engineer could come in and tell us a little bit more. But the engineers want to do, they're like, oh yeah, let us do all the work, but we think we could get a lot of it, at least the cleanup work done. Before we hired the engineers for the big bucks. So I mentioned Division of Water Resources though, we've had a lot of discussions with them. And they're looking at the Arkansas drainage or Arkansas basin in general really hard right now, and trying to clamp down on any. Um, non-legal water use. It's not necessarily illegal, it's just not legal. It doesn't have that right and decree associated with it. They want to know if we'll run the water in the Dilap Ditch in twenty thirty-three, and based on those pictures, I can tell you probably not, so.
There's no, there's no risk in losing it because it's not being used?
No, so water rights come up for, there, there's a list that comes out every ten years. Where, where the division engineer will go through and inspect every water right to make sure it's being used. And if it's not, it's technically abandoned.
Right.
And Dilap Ditch was close to being abandoned, and our engineer kind of had it ran just to fulfill enough obligations. So that we didn't lose the right to it. So thankfully, we have Brian Sutton looking out for us in that aspect. And we, we will still have it for the next ten years. I believe the, the list came out in twenty twenty.
Gary Hanks.
Gary Hanks.
Local water commissioner, he just retired, just gotta give credit where.
Yeah. Well, thanks for Brian, to Brian for telling me about Gary Hanks. Then DNR, DWR is gonna start addressing the Beaver Pond Complex on the Korski Bartlett Saddle. So, um, right at the Mount Albert Trailhead, South Trailhead. You can see currently ninety-eight percent of the water flows to Bartlett, which is the Twin Lakes side. Two percent is going to Korski, which is the Box Creek side. That is, they believe that the majority of the water actually naturally flows to Korski. And so they're gonna start making sure that the majority flows to Korski. That has the downside of not supplying the Beaver Ponds along Highway eighty-two and south and east of Twin Lakes Village. They won't have to supply with water anymore.
Who's gonna be responsible for fixing that drainage?
The DWR.
They're, they're gonna take responsibility to actually do the work?
As far as I know, or they're gonna force the landowners to do the work, so that'd be Forest Service in this case.
Gotcha.
Um, yeah, and.
If that's not something that's gonna be, they're not gonna require the county to come in and do that?
Mm-mm.
I don't believe that.
No, I think, I think they're gonna work with the Forest Service and all the activity that's up there actually at the diversion for Korski and Bartlett.
Yeah, and most of that work, I guess, is crazy old.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, since the fifties, like, they have evidence that in the fifties, they came in to do a lot of work, yeah, to make this reservoir in that complex. Which then the Beavers have kind of taken over and done their own little bit of work too.
So there's no like fear of. Those Beaver Ponds being.
It absolutely is, yeah. Oh, there's a lot of concern, but the division, that's not the division's, they don't care. They're like, I'm sorry.
Being drained? No, that's the direction they want the water to go. But there, all the, all the willows and like, um, the stuff that's happening right at that bridge and not further down. That is like what would probably get removed so that there's just not continued manipulation with the further Beaver activity. At that point.
So those going away, I mean, there's nothing we can do about that.
Unless someone were to acquire water to augment it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that would also affect all the Beaver Ponds going up the hill, uh, beyond the old village there as well, those way.
Yes, because. Because once this is all done, they're basically saying that the only water that will come down to Twin Lakes Village. Will be the amount of water that's needed to satisfy the county and Angel U's water rights.
And that's only above six, um, acre feet, well, sorry, six, six feet per second, whatever that is.
CFS, yeah.
CFS, thank you.
Yeah, anything above and beyond six CFS is what's gonna village, all the rest will go towards.
Right.
In juvie, yeah, under their current plan. So, that, just putting on everyone's radar, because I know we're all gonna hear about this.
Yeah.
Right? And it might, it's probably not gonna happen this summer. This summer, the DWR is just focused more on the analysis side of things. And just kind of understanding what work is ahead of them, because, you know, in, in water world, three years is a really short amount of time.
But that being the case, if Angel U wanted to go up there and do it and pay for it themselves, they would probably allow them to.
I don't know why they would though, it's not in theirs, right? Isn't, aren't we talking about people on the other side?
Isn't that?
No.
No, and this, this doesn't jeopardize their stuff at all, right? They, that's, the division's going to make sure that their water is.
Right, so that, that didn't, but that's what, they could go up and start that work earlier if they wanted to, if they wanted to pay for it separately.
On the Forest Service land, highly doubtful.
Okay, yeah.
That's why, that's what I was asking. And I just don't know if they'd have any, I can't make interest in doing it, yeah.
Well, and, and, and I was talking to Bryce earlier, we have to go looking at the actual order, having read it word for word. But my understanding is that Angel U doesn't have a water right, they have a right to the natural flow that is down Bartlett to divert it.
All right, I, okay, so that was.
The only water, the amount of water that should be protected to run down Bartlett is the county's water, right? That two CFS.
Right.
And then Angel U still needs to get a special use permit from the Forest Service at the diversion point.
Okay, so that's a separate diversion point, that's not the main diversion point, that's what I was misunderstanding.
Correct, yeah, there is a diversion point further down that channels over towards Angel U.
We're not, they aren't talking about the original.
Right.
Yep, and the original is further up at the ridge.
Box Creek, okay, gotcha, thank you.
But they still do need to get permitting from the Forest Service because it's on Forest Service land. And then they'll need to, um, construct and, and install some sort of measuring device. To make sure that the two CFS is going, continuing down and anything above that, um, then could get diverted.
And then up that, and then it goes back.
Yeah.
Right, okay, all right, so yeah, secondary diversion, that's what I was missing.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's a little further down the hill from our diversion point, or.
Yeah.
Ogg Station.
Good, good clarification.
Yeah, definitely, and, um, yeah, we need to read their decree or their court case a little bit more, because it was a settlement. But we believe they might have just proven the natural right of their ponds to exist, more so than got the water right to them.
Right.
And, yeah, I don't know, they did all kinds of studies and called a lot of engineers in for that, so. So last item is the Watershed Advisory Council, which is that defunct, um, kind of oversight organization I was mentioning. Formed in two thousand and four by County Board of County Commissioner Resolution. Met actively, but hasn't met actively since about twenty nineteen. Uh, this was comprised of local water, natural resource experts and concerned citizens to create and vet county water policy and prioritization. So before, like, the current iteration of having someone on staff like me to help guide through this, and, you know, me, Tim, Sarah and Chris are kind of working on this right now. The WAC did a lot of this work in the past. Um, there's an idea to reconvene under the old bylaws and appoint new council members. There was also an idea to maybe have a reorganization of it. And, you know, instead of creating a new council or having another council that meets all the time, what if there's some existing councils that are a little bit more active currently? That could serve as the Watershed Advisor Council. That could serve as the Watershed Advisor Council or you know, combine to sit as the Watershed Advisory Council. I think the most specific ones are like Locosie and the Lake County Conservation District, right? Organizations of people that already have a lot of this knowledge and are already very involved in the natural resources issues in the county.
Yeah, is there like a. Hybrid option of like. The upper Arkansas. That you were saying does JP counties of like having their involvement to an extent, but still having a Lake County person? I guess I'm just.
Yeah, this would be, this is more like the board, or like advisory board. Um, yeah, there's definitely like the upper arc would definitely, we're still talking to them about maybe handling a lot more of the more advanced parts of the administration and not just handle the.
But really more administration.
More administration, right, they wouldn't, this would be.
They'd be helping with the legal aspects.
This would be more people that are like, yeah, kind of like PC vets, land use applications, maybe, you know, and then. There's an opportunity for them to expand more into like the conservation side of things, right, and focus more on water conservation and um encouraging that and. Community outreach and things like that, that come along with this because once the enterprise is up and running. There will be decisions that need to be made, but maybe not enough to have a bi-weekly or monthly board meet to advise it, right?
My only hesitation with it is just like. Like even now, I'm really dumb when it comes to water rights, like there's just, they're so complex and they're so complex in Colorado, so. It's not like you have a huge pool of people to create. A council of people that are gonna be educated enough to know what they're doing and, and to keep that group going. I think that's what, what I'd be feared with is just having people on there because you need bodies to fill it and hopefully you can teach them enough, but really they don't really know what they're doing. You know, like I think that's my, that would be my hesitancy with that, but. If we felt like there was enough of a like. I guess your, your reliance on this council is, is less education based. To use it a lightly, a light word, and you have the backup of, you know, an organization and or people that work that know, know it. Um, but I would just be worried about that, I mean, I think about that even with this commission, right? It's like, it's really hard if people have never done land use or zoning or anything like that before, but we still try to just teach everybody, but. There's a lot of winging it that happens, and to me, this is. A totally different world as far as understanding how a watershed turns into rights to be able to do, you know. A subdivision, you know, I mean, it's all so complex that it's like, I just worry about that.
Absolutely, well, that's where I think like my, my vision for it is like, one member of the Conservation District is on the board. And one member of Locosie is on the board, and so, you know, you had one member of the Forest Health Council, which is kind of Locosie at the same, well, we already have these overlaps going on. Maybe we can continue that overlap and making sure that it's relevant and with stakeholders that are involved in the conversation.
Yeah, and it's like the idea is that that group is like. Protecting Lake County and that's really their purview less than, or I mean, more than. Knowing the ins and outs of.
Water.
Water.
Yeah, I think it changes from what it was because the county didn't have staff and then ongoing knowledge and participation. Um, and so the WAC developed out of that, like Locosie and the Conservation District is trying to do better and shepherd. These like stewardship and mitigation conversations with water right stakeholders. Um, but yeah, I think, I, I think it looks a little bit different now and maybe it's like. Yeah, it's maybe all of these other lists of folks, the Lake County Conservation District, Forest Health Council, Locosie. Are act as like referral agencies for activities or maybe there's just some. Regular convenings so that we're sure that everybody.
The master planning is happening.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And I just see like there's other issues that are gonna come up that are water related, like for instance, like the fire suppression pond issue.
Mm-hmm.
Right, like that's something where we definitely want a more of a conversation, vetting of it, but very involved with water, but not, nothing to do with the enterprise. Nothing to do with water rights, just like designating, given our state statute ability. Um, and then there's other things, you know, like Mike Conlon mentioned, when we were in the, the wildlife modeling meetings, you know, like no one's. Really out there watching out for the aquatic life side of things, right? I know the ten forty one regulations we're looking through and other counties and jurisdictions really mention that, that's very important to them. And so just if we had a more water focused organization that was looking out for that kind of thing, you know.
Yeah, totally.
Oh, totally, I mean, not, I haven't said this to you, but I thought. Um, too, I was approached by a CMC professor um with any um opportunity to do some. River, you know, monitoring and water quality monitoring um with the natural resource damages funding that we got. There, they did award CSU, um, some, some department with a. River restoration monitoring in the Arkansas or in Lake County specifically, I believe. Um, so I've been meaning to try to find out who is doing that, but maybe we just better work at coordinating.
Yeah, that's like, that's another great thing, like, yeah, the WAC really could inform like, right, post wildfire. A watershed impacts, or I mean, my thing is like climate change resilience, right, as we, we need. More people focused on that because we're all gonna have to be more aware of how much water we're using and.
Well, there's, you know, organizations such as Ski Cooper that are. Wondering about water rights and things like that, so it's like understanding what some of the existing, what future needs are gonna be.
Mm-hmm, and so I should mention these guiding documents, two of them are just bylaws for the WAC. The other one is a, I think three five nine, three oh five is a two thousand and nine water needs assessment study. Very, very thorough, it's like eighty pages. Um, it's kind of interesting to look at too because it's before the prior, it's before this current era of development in Lake County, so it kind of speaks to a different Lake County. But they did a lot of demographic projections in there and development projections and just things like that, so it's still a very relevant document to read. And should still be guiding, just with the caveat that obviously things are different, you know, it talks about Coyle Mountain Ski Area a lot, right? That's not gonna happen, but um, yeah, there's, there's definitely some, some bodies of work out there that we could go on. And work off of. So, that's, that's kind of it, yeah, we, that was a good discussion, like what is the WAC, what should the WAC be? We have the potential to start it up for whatever's most useful.
You're right, water rights are incredibly complicated. But that's also, that's something that uh, JP County and, and that organization have been dealing with. For a long time, on, on very different, in a very different way.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's very complicated as you get further down into the farming.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
It could certainly be a help us to look and watch out for.
Yeah.
We do have a water attorney, we're gonna engage water resource engineers, cause the conversation with. The upper arc has fluctuated between like, oh great, and like you'll be monitoring. Applications and resumes that are applied to the division and, I don't know, because there might be conflict and. Cause we won't be a part of their district, so it's kind of gone from like, yeah, that idea of like, awesome, we'll like share this. Body of knowledge or.
But. The Royal Water is so cutthroat, like we can't even hire an engineer that works in this basin, right? We have to make sure that our engineer has no conflicts of interest.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, that's, that's the thing is.
Yeah, that almost takes it away from being something that you wanna have concerned citizens involved with.
Yeah.
It's just, you're right, it's so complicated, there's no way to get up to speed.
Right.
And, and really be effective.
No, and I feel like it's taken me the last six months just to get to this point where I can present this to you, right? I mean, and Sarah's been working on this for years and.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I hope I, that's the end, and I hope I did justice, I know it's complicated, I know it's a little um. Dry, the pun intended, but. I, it's fascinating and it's really important for our county, right? And we're at this point now, we're at this critical point now where we're actually getting the enterprise up and running, and so we have some critical decisions to make. And there's so much, I think there's so much demand pent up out there. Cause we've been fielding calls for years telling people, just wait for the enterprise, that it's gonna be really surprising when we finally get it up and running and start seeing. The real interest come out of the woodwork, right, more seriously.
Well, I think that's where, to me, like one of the biggest things is like your prioritization.
Absolutely.
Schedule, and I guess, and this is again, not knowing how it all works, like. Is there. I know we have to use it or lose it, but is there. Us, I, I would also assume that we don't want to give it all away right now.
Right.
Right, like we want to plan, cause it's not gonna be any easier to get it in the future more.
You're right.
And so for a growing county and community that maybe will need future, I guess, so that's where.
You mean if you're starting out with two hundred shares, you don't want to immediately sell two hundred shares, is that what you're talking about?
Right, right, right.
Okay.
Yeah, creating that prioritization policy, like, okay, well, how many do we save?
Right.
Or.
Yeah, I think some things need to be figured out, like the vetting process in general needs to be figured out, and you know, the vetting process, each application will come in and need to be approved by the board. But there are some outstanding questions, like how many shares maximum would people, right, could, is it one person per share? Or could each person get two or three or four or five? Um.
Shares are big, right, you don't really need a whole share.
Well, let's not say shares, cause it looks like.
Unit, unit, sorry, unit, out of the two hundred units.
Cause only one, cause one unit.
Huge units, then one unit is.
In household alone.
One year.
Right. And if they want some water for landscaping, they can buy another unit, and that's why you.
But can they?
Divided.
And I guess that's where you got all those questions.
Yeah.
Interesting, but yeah, I mean, those units are actually not huge units, that's not a lot of water.
Well, yeah, you have a lot of people who are, you know. Uh, have the livestock thing going on, these smaller ones.
Those are some of the questions I feel for sure, especially.
Those are some of the biggest people I see that would want them, but again. Does a whole bunch of those get prioritized over the idea of being able to finally have something that we can incentivize?
Right.
Development that we want, so like. I've been, those conversations of making sure that that's a priority plan seems really important.
I think as we continue the conversations around economic development encouragement and commercial incentives too, with. Specifically with Parkville and Sanitation District and figuring out just how much and where. That existing infrastructure might be able to expand.
Sure.
We'll figure out what that actual boundary is.
Yeah, what that leaves, and then what we want to see or not to see in places.
Um, but yeah, I mean, I, I had all the same questions in talking with the upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District, cause I was like, well. Well, save this percentage for X and Y and da, 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 and because they have so much water and they've been doing it for so long. I felt like, you know, the response was kind of cavalier and like, why bother, like let the market, you know, demands dictate it. And I have to say, I'm, I'm, I've landed there finally, six years later with like, okay, well.
Yeah.
If it's a big, major subdivision, there is a land use process. The Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners decide and staff works to see if this is an appropriate use for the water and then when. And like the, uh, start of the conversation was a one tenth of an acre foot where it felt. Once we had the idea and kind of the, the typical process is to use one twentieth of an acre foot, oh shoot. And sorry, we just stopped screen sharing and didn't see your hand up beforehand. Um, you double that portfolio, which provides a huge relief. And, I mean, we can always change.
Double the portfolio as far as shares.
As the, yeah, the size of the units, and then we, yep.
Gotcha.
Um, um, and we can always, uh, you know, we can always set new priorities or policies and. Um, we can also.
There's not a fear that we're just gonna.
Well, there's also like.
Kind of staring at you because the Bartlett reservoir. Think I get the name right.
Gulch?
Box Creek reservoir?
Box, sorry, the, the new reservoir is coming in, increases our amount of water incredibly. But there's no, there's no way to count on if and when that will actually happen, so that's a, it's a dangerous thing to, to count on. Or to try to plan on.
And also, I just make, wanna make sure the lap, the slide of the Mount Massa Golf Course wasn't. They're not guaranteed that thirteen acre feet necessarily, like Bryce earlier went into. We wanna wean them off of that forty acre feet, so we have as much of that forty acre feet to use in the augmentation plan and. Supply them with water in different ways with.
But there's not currently a plan to wean them completely off of it and make them independent either, is there?
Um, no, I mean, they could do their own, you know, they could initiate a completely separate water supply. Um, and do spot market water, well, it'll, we'll open up greatly.
But there's no plan to force them to do that at this point.
Well, we're already incentivizing it by cutting it from twenty three to thirteen and.
Right.
And I mean, I think.
So they can see the writing on the wall, but there's not a, especially if by this date, you need to be independent, there's not anything like that.
No, and we still have yet to see what they look like as a customer and whatnot. And.
Hi guys, I have so many questions. Um, so I, I totally agree and hear what you um say Heather about concerns about the WAC, but I really think that. Um, that could be a resume based application, I think, yes, it's great. Maybe a concerned citizen representation on it, but it certainly wouldn't be the weight of the membership. I think that it really has to be expertise based, and I think in the, previously. Um, you know, we were lucky enough to have some expertise on, on the WAC previously and I, and, and hopefully. And would be able to find a way to really be selective about that um water advisory board, but I really think that. Um, you know, just like them doing the uh water needs assessment, I, I just think that there um. Needs to be some careful planning and the prioritization of it, I hear what you're saying, Sarah, about market based. Um, kind of driving it, but um, I guess I, I still think that it needs to have a very. Um, well thought out prioritization and, and some planning behind it, I, you know, immediately know that. The calls I constantly get are minor subdivisions and in areas like um Lost Canyon where we have subdivisions that were created by. Um, courts and didn't go through a subdivision review process and are already um, for lack of. Like, I guess just to not hold back or kind of ending up the Wild Wild West down there. I am a little concerned about continuing to subdivide properties that, that are problematic already. And to further the, the pain points that we, we currently have in different areas, so. I, I would just encourage some thought about um. Some planning behind um how. The, the enterprise is managed as far as, as applications and we had talked a long time ago about maybe some kind of um. Scoring um mechanism um for applications and unless it's a first come, first served basis. Then it seems like there should be direction about within the boundary where um you want that prioritization. And then um, oh gosh, something else too, but I can't remember what it was now. Um, those are, oh, I would also just ask the group what they think about. Um, this has been such a long time in the making since nineteen ninety eight. Um, and, and what about um some public engagement on this? Um. To just like a town hall opportunity for the residents of Lake County, I just, I, I just know that there's so many people queued up and kind of waiting. Um, and I, I think it'd be interesting for everyone to kind of hear what kind of immediate demand there would be and in what direction. So a town hall would probably give you an opportunity to kind of have a better understanding of um, you know, what kind of. Of um immediate attention and what type of attention the enterprise would get, those are just my thoughts.
That scares me. I, it scares me just because I don't still understand all of it and I think that it's. It'd have to get real dumbed down. As far as like, here's what a unit would get you. Here's what, you know, I think there would have to be all of that.
And, and how do you actually get it, has it delivered, has it, there are a thousand questions that would need to be very simple to answer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And once we have, I think once we get it set up, we.
Agreed.
Town hall.
Agreed, I think once there's, once it's set up and we. But at this point, it would scare me just because we don't have it set up and we don't know what we're, yeah.
Right.
I mean, I'm steering, I'm, and maybe it's just me, I'm, I'm a deer head like still about this couple things, so. You know, and it, and it's like, it's funny because I deal with them all the time, but not in the watershed space, you know. You know, and, and you see developers get their shares and then they take it to Water Court and somehow over there it turns into an augmentation plan. And then they get to come back and they get to have this water, and that's the extent that I know it, you know? And I think that that's the case for most people is like, most people don't understand like. So I have a water right, right, when I have a well, and it's like, no, that's not a water right, that's just a permit to drill a well, you know? So there's just too much of that, that I'm, that I feel like there would have to be. All of those answers already figured out as far as what we would be willing to offer and then what that equates to for them. Like, I have two donkeys, how much, how many units do I have to buy for you?
How do I get?
We don't have that question right now. Or the price or the.
Well, yeah, I mean, and that's where the, you know, the curators have kind of already agreed in principle to like domestic and house use only, which helps the reverse set of questions.
Well, I don't, I don't know that that's actually true. I think the, the one twentieth of an acre foot helps that in house use, and that is still to be determined like with the enterprise. Like, I don't think currently, there's nothing that says landscaping would be prohibited.
Right, but I thought that's what we. That's what we, that's what we agreed to, when we said. But yeah, there's nothing, nothing in writing.
I just think about Angel View when they came in and they thought they were going to be the first customer of the water augmentation of the enterprise. And, you know, they immediately, what did they want, uh, ninety, no?
Eight acre feet.
They wanted eight acre feet.
Eight acre feet and, um, you know, and, and so where's, you know, Angel View two is right around the corner. And so I, I, I think it's just, I think it is kind of knowing, I guess, how you want to have things set up by prioritization. Because I think that there are really savvy development out there that's going to be the first one in line trying to come in and take a good. Of the water, and so I think, uh, maybe it's not a town hall, maybe it's more of an internal understanding of, of what the prioritization is. And, and what you want to see where, because I do think that there is certainly, um, this water could. Um, certainly help a subdivision go through the process considerably faster, um, any development. You know, it makes or breaks, water makes or breaks development, and so it's going to have an incredible impact and.
Well, and it's also going to. It's going, it, it has the potential to increase their property value significantly enough. That even if they're not ready to develop, but they want to be able to sell it.
Yeah.
So they, the upper arc does have clauses in their lease agreements that say after a certain amount of time, if you don't use it, then you've lost it. Because you cannot obtain a unit and be a customer upon speculation, like you can't.
You can't buy it two years.
You can't buy two acre feet for no reason and not use it. If you don't actually apply that water or you don't do the development, then that goes back into the portfolio.
After how long?
Of the county.
Two years.
Well, they have two years.
Okay.
Maybe two sets of town halls, maybe you do an internal town hall where it brings in all the, the Parkville water and, and these other local experts. Uh, and potentially who's on the W A C and, and, and us. And have a, a round table before you open it up and make it more of a public meeting. It should be nice to. To hear from a lot of folks that.
Because even if somebody doesn't, uh, doesn't buy them and attach them. Yeah, just, if they know it's just all they have to do is go to the county and get this water because there's no.
I don't think you. Yeah, I don't think you like are a paying customer without land or like a well or something to actually augment. Um, Anne, Anne, I don't, I mean, Anne, I have a question for you about like your talk about E E Hill. I mean, that seems like a zoning thing or a, you know, um, rejection of a minor subdivision application. Rather than a water priority setting.
All right, so, you know, right now, minor subdivisions aren't really happening because they need to do odd plans. But certainly the majority of the people that I think have spoken to us about, you know, that I, that are always wanting the updates. Of when the water's ready, the majority of them want to do minor subdivisions. And certainly Lost Canyon is a very hotspot of them wanting to do that. And so, uh, you know, they'll, they'll make application based on, so they're going to come to the enterprise. Prior to applying for their minor subdivision, because they need to add minor subdivision. It's not like three phases of a major subdivision, they have to have everything, um, done. You know, they've got to have con, concept, preliminary and final ready for. And so they're going to come to the enterprise and want to become a, you know, and look to become a customer. So their minor subdivision, um, and, and that'll be their water supply plan. Um, I don't know if the enterprise would do something contingent upon their entitlement, but I, you know, they would, they would need that in order to apply.
But if it's a land use issue, then it should be corrected.
Well, it would mean we don't allow for minor subdivisions.
In the water enterprise?
Or the, for the land use side? That, that would be the only way to correct it, land use, to say we don't allow minor subdivisions. What she's saying is that if people have this land and they meet all the other criteria of minor subdivision, but water.
Right.
Now they're going to come to you in gross because they need the water. So the only way to correct that is to remove minor subdivision, which I don't know that we want to do either.
I would, here's, here's what I talked to about with Bryce. I love a tear that says, or something that says minor subdivisions of parcels. That weren't planted through a subdivision process or something such as that. Something that would recognize that it's, it may be appropriate on parcels that weren't created. By something other than a subdivision process. So if you want to mind, if you want to. Some, somewhere to identify that, you know, we've got, we've recognized these parcels that are, are becoming difficult to develop. And, um, maybe they, maybe these are not the areas, I, I don't know if that's the areas that, that you want to do that. I'm just saying those are definitely planning concerns, the roads, the access, the topography, the. Um, you know, there's, there's just a lot of things associated with those areas that, that are problematic.
We have a few subdivisions that are a little bit weird and. Like Beaver Lake filing one. Used to be that you had to share a well per every two lots. And then they s- somehow that changed that they can, they now will allow the allocation of one well per half acre lot down there. But then they're trying to fit them on this subject, and then Miwa, that issue out in Panarc. I guess I'm wondering where the county sits with that because. I understand that Miwa is the problem, and if you buy a Panarc, that's just what it is. But it was also developed prior to the county requiring infrastructure to be put in. And so there's a bunch of people with completely unsellable properties right now because they cannot get a water trap. And he may have a handful left, but basically it's a no go to get them. Unless you have an, you can provide an active building permit. So basically, sales on any lots out there and or people prospectively looking at that area, which was our cheapest place to build in the county. Has ceased to exist and basically Jeff, who can sometimes be doom and gloom about things, is saying. Well, I think the last thing he told, last time he told Amy, he's like, Water Court could take us eight months or it could take us four years. And so are we really going to look at Panarc being completely non-buildable place in the county? Because Miwa didn't have the appropriate water. So like, to me, there's like so many of these little places that it's just kind of a ma, we're kind of a mess. Which I know you, everybody knows about, but it's just like wrapping my brain around how some of those areas are going to get. How that's going to get mitigated in some of those areas is, is, um, certainly a concern because. Yeah, like I said, it was, it was one of the cheapest places you could buy a lot in the county to think about building, and now you just can't do it. Or you won't do it. So.
Panarc is a great, um, example too, because we have people that don't want the cost of having to work. If, if they, if they could come in under the odd plan and put in a well, instead of being part of Miwa. Um, in the areas that their water lines are further away, so it's a cost thing. You know, they'd want to, they'd want to do that as well. I don't know if that's a positive or a negative, but you know, there's, there's definitely, you know, we've been in situations where people want to consider. A cistern because they don't want the cost of having to bring in, um, the line.
Water lines, yeah.
Um, so, you know, there, there's, there's going to be a lot of, I think we just have to take into account. You know, what, what the, where the asks are going to come and, and what our current. You know, land use challenges are, and what does it look like if all of these problem, you know, these areas come in? To further develop or subdivide or, you know, what, what does that look like? It just taking a kind of an inventory of where we're at and what's going on will be really important.
Well, and like I said, like, I think that my lack of knowledge on this and understanding how much our water enterprise actually equates to. Would lend to my opinion on whether or not we need a prioritization schedule. Like, if we have so much water that like all of these people asking for this stuff isn't going to impact us, fine, market dictation. But if it actually isn't, and there's all going to be a lot of, of these clearly asks that maybe aren't as valuable to us, then I would. So I guess I don't even know.
And you know enough to know what you don't know, and a lot of people don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, let him mind his shoes. I mean, see, I, I think like all those decisions, that's for everyone to decide, right? I'm here to administer.
You have made it much more clear, thank you.
But yeah, no, I, I definitely think there's a lot of discussions to be had before we actually start administering it. Um, yeah, I mean, my question is where in the county, right? Because it seems like where we're, where we're incentivizing development. Well, theoretically, if there's large developments going there, shouldn't they hook up to Parkville? Parkville, shouldn't they be willing to pay the infrastructure cost to do that? Is this providing them an out? So how do we, yeah, to disincentivize the things we don't want to happen as well?
Yeah, and creating distance rules probably is where that helps. If they're within so far, you know, just kind of like that it works now, but we had our own distance regulation. You have to pull Parkville if you're within so many feet, you can't come to us. But I think there's some places that. Uh, it's not as feasible, but yeah, I don't know. You have to look at the, at the map.
Yeah, and then there's the whole issue of like, Parkville has capacity to spare. Landville Sand has probably, yeah, does not at all, right? And so where, there's just that inherent conflict between water supply and sanitation. And so it's like, if we were to try to somehow develop further south along the twenty-four corridor. You know, is there ability to get water there? But then sanitation doesn't, has no ability to go there, and then we're screwed anyways, right? So I think it's a big multifaceted conversation too. Um, because that's the problem that I have is that the sanitation and water don't line up. And so what are we going to incentivize? A bunch of distant neighborhood that can be on the odd plan, but then every single. Little lot has its own septic still or, you know.
Which makes it so the lots can't be small.
Right.
Which makes them more expensive. It's actually better, right, environmentally that it's septic that they have and sit out the other way around. Right, like I think they don't like you being on a well, but then on sewer, if you're not putting it back in. But it just, yeah, I mean, it makes it. Sanitation should just make things difficult.
But I, I, I hope this, I understand that it maybe wasn't as dumbed down as you'd like for a town.
No, no, please don't take it like that. No, I think. I think it's great, I've never had this kind of like level of trying to understand it and I'll, I'll learn more.
Okay, I will try to.
Yeah, that's just for public average, for public average.
But you brought up some great questions, right? Like about, we need to make people more aware of what a well is and what that, what the rights associated with the well are. Because I mean, a lot of people have the idea that this well, oh, then I.
I have unlimited water.
Right, then I build an A D U and I can just use the well or whatever. There's a lot of different things that, that change the actual, actual use of the well or your permissions that you have associated with the well, so. There, there's definitely some work that I need to do to make it more, get down to the brass tacks a little bit more, just.
Well, I think this was a really good, like, this level, and then it's like, okay, from there, what it turns into, like you were talking about units. And then what does, what would a unit look like and how much does that take out of a share? Those are the kind of, you know, that's just next. But I feel like this wasn't, this was the good talk piece.
Well, and, and you brought up a really, uh, not, not to add another, um. But, but the A D U question, you know, that, that changes all the, you know, kind of the rules around A D Us as well. So, you know.
Right.
A lot of augmentation asked to add A D Us in the county as well.
For sure, that would be, that's going to be the one.
No, I just, I just want, I mean, I mean, I, I think our land use code should reflect. Should not miss, should, if we need to look at land use code before we lay out the augmentation plan. Um, I, I feel like we should really do that. Um, and not just rely on the augmentation, the enterprise's priorities to dissuade. Um, land uses. You know what it's on?
No, I agree, but yeah, I think the, like, the, well, and that'll be part of the conversation, I guess, but. Deciding where A D Us can live, right? And if our ideas are that it just needs ample parking and it needs these bigger lots and it needs all this, but then this person has a well. I think it is, it is up to the WAC or whoever to determine what priority that A D U falls. Right? Or are you saying?
Water to lease.
Right, that's what I mean.
The water.
Yeah.
And if the land use code isn't supporting smart development, then change the land use code.
Mm-hmm.
Assuming that there is the, now there is the ability to have the water, um, so.
Yeah, right. It's all just going to be a.
Well, it's also like I'm, uh, um, yeah, I think these are all great ideas and I'm more here to listen and. Come up with a plan that everyone in this community wants, right?
I guess like my bad. Every single person.
The majority of this community wants, right?
Good, good. I just want to keep your expectations. No, thanks, Bryce, I think that was super helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, that's kind of where we're at right now, right? And like I said, Sarah and I working on this all the time, um, and Tim and Chris as well, so.
So where do we, where do we go from here? Do we need to do anything or is this kind of informational?
This was just informational, just kind of give you guys what's on the horizon, what's coming. These are definitely conversations that we're going to be having a lot more of. Um, but right now, we're at the stage where we're, we've figured out that Hayden is a storage facility. Great, need to engage with that engineer to learn a little bit more about augmentation administration.
Right.
Right, and then.
Clean up that ditch.
Well, and then we just need to, yeah, the actual framework of the enterprise. And there's decisions that can be made on top of that afterwards, where we know the framework of, okay, we have two hundred units available. This is kind of how things are running. We've engaged with this person or that person to do the administration part of things. And then I think once we're more established in the framework, then we can go into the prioritization and discussions. But I would expect those, I don't know, this summer.
Cool.
Hopefully.
Well, thank you, I think that was awesome. Anybody else have any questions? Okay.
I'll maybe close the meeting.
I have a motion to close the meeting. Howard, you still there?
A little later, I second.
All right, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody, have a good night. Yeah, maybe I have to take, hit the two for me.
Did I explain any of it?
No, you did, I'm sorry, I, I know, I'm like really dumb. No, I think that, I think that it's just that it's super complex, but.
It is.
I've always wanted to know more and learn more about it, so.
It is complex and two hundred units is not very many units.
Yeah, it feels, it sounds.